Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of Wednesday, January 10. We are coming to you live tonight from the Savage Center. We are all in attendance tonight with the exception of Dr. Thompson could not join us this evening and the lovely and talented Dr. Taylor will be filling in, playing the part of Dr. Thompson. Can I ask everybody in attendance to please rise with a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, let's break down business. Our first order of business is approval of minutes. We had two sets of minutes in our packet this evening. The business meeting minutes from December 20th as well as the executive session minutes from December 20th. Does anyone have any questions on the minutes?
Question, Tocar?
We'll move by Teresa. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by David. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's three. All those abstaining?
Yeah.
Aye, aye. So that would be me and Kate because we were not at that meeting. So that passes three, zero, two abstentions. That moves us on to the next item, correspondence. Dr. Taylor, do we have any correspondents this evening?
We do not manage yet.
Thank you. And moving to the next is the warrant report. So I'm going to do the two warrant reports, the one from last meeting as well as the one for this meeting. So for the meeting for December 20th, I signed warrants in the amounts of $2,296,226.32, and $839.48 for a grand total of $3,966,873.69. Are there any questions on that warrant report? Great. So the warrants for this evening, I'll get to my next screen. So for this meeting, I have signed warrants in the amounts of $1,986,926.71, $36,242.6, and $67.50 for a grand total of $3,203,069.92. Any question on that one? Great. So moving right along to our next item on the agenda is public comment. Reminder to the public that public comment can be accessed by registering with the superintendent's office up to noon of the day of our meeting to register to speak in person or to receive a hybrid link when we are meeting in hybrid format. You can also come to the school committee room and sign in to speak at that time. At 7:09, I'll declare public comment open. Is anyone here to speak for public comment? Seeing nobody in the room, Dr. Taylor, did anyone pre-register for public comment?
No one is registered.
Great. And seeing as there is none registered, at 7:10, I will declare public comment closed. So next on our agenda are appearances. So first appearance, we have Ms. Jerry Slater and Ms. Mary Lou Fallin to come to speak to us about the 2024 town meeting dates.
Good evening, Dr. Taylor, Madam Chair, school committee members, and the public watching at home. I'm Jerry Slater, as Chair Mizola said, and I'm joined tonight by Mary Lou Fallin, our town clerk. Let me say right up front that the good news is that the town clerk and I are not here asking for any approvals, any votes, or anything like that. This is a quick follow-up to a commitment that I made to town meeting during the November fall town meeting when we had a little bit of a scheduling snafu that some of you will remember. We unfortunately were hit with a potential conflict for a second day of our special town meeting. It happened late on the first night. It wasn't cool. We all know that, and it's past history. So as part of that, out of respect for town meeting, I took it upon myself, and I'm dragging the town clerk with me, to basically make sure that all boards are informed about our town meeting dates. This is in addition to the correspondence that goes out from the general manager's office that lists all the dates as well. So again, we don't want to have this happen again. I know we all felt that way that night and going forward. So in the spirit of collaboration, this is a commitment that we made, and I just want to make sure that you all are aware of that. Ms. Fallin will hand this out afterwards, but we've got a new town meeting that we're starting in the winter because nobody loves town meeting more than wintertime. And we're going to talk about very exciting land use articles. So this is part of the commitment that the town managers had made to, and it took us a couple of years, a couple of years for, I shouldn't take any credit for this, to get this in motion, and I think it'll be really good thing. So that meeting will begin on March 21st, which is a Thursday. So we've got a new thing where we would generally start on a Monday due to some conflicts specifically with the moderator. We're going to start on Thursday. So it'll be Thursday the 21st. It will go for as long as it needs to go. Currently, right now, there are six articles slated for that town meeting. And the warrant requests to the Board of Selectmen, I believe, closed yesterday for that one. And the info sessions, this is early information, are slated for, there may be more than one, but right now, February 28th is slated for a town meeting information session on that land use town meeting, special town meeting. That's going to be followed again by our May town meeting. And again, that will be the annual, which is the date established by the town charter, as well as there will most definitely be a special town meeting as well. That will begin on Monday, May 13th. And again, will go for as long as it needs to go. Articles for that town meeting are due to the Board of Selectmen on March 12th. Also, just very early warning on this as well, information sessions, and right now we're slated to have three, will begin on Monday, April 29th. There's an additional one slated for Wednesday, May 1st, and Thursday, May 2nd. And of course, all of those are recorded and will run, will be available for replay and run on NCM, I would assume as well. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to the town clerk who has an additional announcement.
I just wanted to let everybody know that nominating papers are available at the town clerk's office for anybody that wants to run for a major office, townwide office, or town meeting members. And they are due back in the town clerk's office by Monday, February 12th. So if anybody wants to take out papers, just come down to the town clerk's office. Do you have them all ready?
And that's it, unless there are any questions.
Any questions for Mrs. Slater or Ms. Fallin?
And thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And you know, the extra step in communication transparency is really helpful. A question more for Dr. Taylor, Ms. Zola, maybe back to Dr. Thompson, but just to ensure, since there was a little bit of snafu, that the policy is being followed and the dates that were just shared with us have been cleared and there are no conflicts at the high school?
So I checked myself with looking at the calendar and spoke with the principal, and there are no conflicts at this time.
Okay. Great. And then just the info sessions, which I know Ms. Slater is not under you, but the February 28th and the May 1st, we have school committee meetings. So if the school committee or the administration was expected to be there, we cannot be there. I don't think we even need to be there February 28th because we have no land use articles.
Unless you just want to go as meeting members.
But the May 1st one, just maybe if it could be shared with Mr. Mizuko that that would be a night that we would not be able to do the school portion of an info session.
We'll pass it on, I'm sure Dr. Taylor, Dr. Thompson will pass that on as well.
Great. Thank you so much.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for the time.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Alrighty. So next on our agenda, actually, we are going to be skipping over, Ms. Bouchois is not feeling well this evening, so we're going to skip there. And we are going to invite Ms. Ugliolo, you know I'm going to say it, Ugliolo, because I think it's actually spelled right. Nope, Ugliolo, Ugliolo.
You got it.
I got it. And the HR staff to speak to us this evening about an update on HR improvements. I kept wanting to put an extra G in there before the L, that's what it was.
How is one of them going to pronounce the G?
I don't know. Uliolo. Alright, alright. That's a little more lyrical. Yeah. It does. I like that.
So thank you for having us here. I know that there have been lots of back and forth about what we're doing, the HR team. I want to introduce them as a whole, and if you have any questions that relate directly to what they're doing, happy to bring them up. This is Janice. You probably have talked to her or heard from her. She is our main school liaison. This was, she holds the position that I believe came over when the agreement was made. But since then, we've expanded kind of what we, what HR does for the schools, which is great because there's lots of different areas. I'm not going to sit here and tell you all the different things that HR does because you probably know what that is. But I can tell you that this team, we have a team of seven people in the HR office, and each one of us takes on a little bit of the school, the schoolwork. So while we, while Janice does the majority of it, and she's our conductor and tells us where to go and what to do, we are all, we're all in. And we're excited about where we've come and some of the exciting opportunities in the future. So we're happy to be part of this team. So I think there had been a request about the memo that had gone out from Dr. Thompson and General Manager Mizuko. There was kind of some goals, things that should have been set, they were hoping to accomplish. And I provided a memo to Dr. Thompson that kind of laid out kind of where I thought things had gone. I believe that you have seen a copy of that, followed up with some questions that I responded to. So do you have any other questions beyond that for us, or how can, any ideas on how we can be more helpful to all of you?
Does anybody have any questions, comments, concerns, discussion?
I just have some logistics questions. So in the memo, so we have two things in our packet. One is kind of got the, it just says HR Services, January 2024.
Yeah.
And then we've got a memo. The memo is undated. When is the memo from?
Before my time.
Okay.
I think, yeah, I'm going to go with 2021.
This is the 2021 memo?
Yeah.
Okay. I was confused.
Not a new one. This is the original.
And when you read the memo, you can understand why I got confused.
Yes.
And was like, wait, what's going on? Okay. Honestly, the person who works most closely with your area is Mr. Wells, but he's, you're relatively new, so I don't want to put you on the spot, but that would be the liaison there that...
I'm totally happy to engage. I mean, we met just this afternoon on...
Right. So I'm not going to, but I'm just going to say like, it would make sense to, for me, for the two of you to form a very close working relationship.
So we definitely have a close working relationship.
Okay.
Maybe even closer is Janice and Matt and his team, actually. They work really closely together. Janice is in the schools here. They're actually moving her desk closer to the rest of that team.
Okay.
So that will help with some of the teamwork. And so we engage, they engage me when there's kind of a high level discussion that like we had today, generally day-to-day stuff. Janice, she's got it in the bag. So they have a very good working relationship. Matt was good enough to set up bi-weekly meetings, just to discuss kind of anything that might come up so you're not only meeting when things are kind of urgent. So that's, I think that's been working out pretty well. And things only really come to me when they need kind of that overarching viewpoint.
Can you help us understand if your office is involved at all in Munis and the payroll accounting and those types of things? We know that there's been bumps there. I've been on the committee. Everything blurs for me, right, like pre-COVID, COVID, and then post-COVID.
Yeah.
So I don't know how your office is involved in that, or if it's involved in that, and are there plans to make that kind of reporting go a little bit easier? I know that's been a challenge for the schools.
Absolutely. So we do use Munis a lot.
Yeah.
Not necessarily on the payroll side, although payroll and HR functions intersect frequently.
Yeah.
I know that the bumps that are perceived and that exist.
Yeah.
It's both of them.
Yeah.
Are happening and are being looked at.
Okay.
The only role that I have played is trying to connect the town treasurer payroll office with the school payroll staff and just find a better, excuse me, a better way to just manage the process, really. It's huge. Payroll is an absolutely huge process, and you're bringing in, you know, hundreds of different pieces to come into one and go into a larger warrant. So it is very detailed, and I know that the treasurer has said he's willing to engage in a conversation to make that process better. So the only part that I played is trying to connect those two pieces together and make it as good as we can for the staff, right? We don't want the staff to struggle with the process if they're involved in the process, or the end staff is actually getting paid. We don't want them to like not get paid, or get paid incorrectly, or have it be difficult. So we're trying to just make that as easy for everybody as possible.
And then, can you explain, and again, this is, the January HR Services is very good. It's very high level, and I don't live in the HR world all the time, so I'm going to ask some like nitty, like, so that I can understand a little bit better. Like, what is the, like, how can HR help us with things like, I mean, we've got positions that are open, we are searching for people, we need to do market analysis. Is that, are those the types of things that the HR office can help us with, or are those the types of things that should remain separate?
So those are things that HR does help with.
Okay.
We're not, we're doing some of them now, for sure. We're doing posting, where can we post? How do we get the, catch the widest net? How do we get the best people? How do we keep them here once they're, once they're here and happy?
Yeah.
That's all very important. It's much more cost-effective to keep somebody in a, that's good in a position than try to go out and find someone. So investing in that retention is really important. Janice does a lot, a majority of her work is in recruiting and just processing stipends and keeping people kind of going year to year. But there's more we can do, for sure, and that is a standard HR function and something that we could help with. Right now, over the past, I'd say, three years, the amount of work on the recruiting side and the stipend side, just in processing, using the current processes in place, is staggering. It's just, it's like quadrupled, at least. So we're just scattering to be as efficient as we can be. Is that, do you think that's a good...
Yeah.
I mean, we have a very important position open.
Maybe one.
And so I just, you know, is, if we were to request a market analysis, that would be something you could, you could help us with?
Yes.
Okay. Great.
I just wanted to say that whatever conversations that have been happening to sort of generate you guys coming here, I appreciate those conversations, and I appreciate you guys being here. There's been so many moving pieces, you know, on town sign and in the schools lately that it makes an already challenging job even more so. So this sort of proactive measure and coming together, I think, is a great sign, and I appreciate it.
Thank you for saying that. We were joking before with Matt, but I say this all the time, people are probably sick of me saying it, but HR is a team sport. Like, it's not one person or even a small group of people. Like, we're all HR. Like, we all take a little piece of it. So I appreciate your participation and collaboration.
Amy. Yes. Thank you for Kate and Jill for all your questions and endpoints. So thank you, Lisa, Janice, team, for being here. To the point of why are you here, how did we get here, just really quickly, didn't happen by accident, but one of the pieces in our packet from 2021 was that initial memo from Dr. Thompson and Tony Mizuko at the time saying, "We think a partial consolidation." It wasn't like a full-on joint facilities, like we have a facilities department, but that we think a partial consolidation of HR would be more efficient and effective. And at that time, it allowed the school department to absorb and gain an additional financial analyst position that was very much needed. And then was the beginning of this relationship and strengthening the HR functions. And we were supposed to be reviewing that consolidation memo and checking in along the way. A lot happened. We didn't quite do that. And then some challenges arose. We were talking about them, we were now rectifying them. But also for the committee and the community, this is part of our strategic plan. So in objective one, our goals clearly say that we want to enhance the alignment of school-town resources, including financial systems, facilities, and human resources, to strategically advance objectives and initiatives while optimizing staffing and maximize the educational experience for both students and faculty. So that's kind of how we got here. But that last part, you know, enhancing for our faculty, that is a question that I would have for you. So one of our policies, our wellness policy, has a whole section devoted to staff well-being and staff support. And this is not a criticism of anybody because we all try really, really hard, but I think this is an area of opportunity, more support for our staff in terms of their well-being and their mental health. So could either of you speak, like, what could we look at, or just briefly, is there opportunity for us to focus more on that area?
There definitely is, and I'm going to, I'm going to step into this one because this is an area that I'm super passionate about.
Okay.
Just keeping staff healthy, happy, and motivated to give them the best chance for success. And mental health is a big part of that and wellness, and it's also a huge concern for many districts across the Commonwealth and the country right now, since for the past four years, it has become, we've seen dramatic increases in challenges in this area. And so I was actually just talking with Jody earlier about options that we have, things that we can do. So the first thing is identifying where the problems are, how wide they are in different areas, and then determining if things like training or different kinds of analysis need to happen to improve things. And Mike Thornton and I, he does our workers' comp and unemployment, we're seeing some things through that as well. So we're, we're actually looking at opportunities for grants or various trainers to come in. So I'm definitely supportive of jumping in and trying to make this as good as we can. Unfortunately, even though I have the best team in the world, we are limited to like time-wise, so we're going to be looking for efficiencies in making those things happen. So we want to help the most people as we can with the least amount of resources.
And that leads into my next question, which is staffing and funding, because HR does not live under the school committee budget.
Yeah.
So the five of us at this table have no authority over the staffing currently. And I know that a lot of work has been done. I know over the summer, you built up your team. Janice, I know you were doing the job of like three people for a while there, so thank you.
She's amazing.
But, but again, you know, there's efficiencies, but then there's also effectiveness, and then there's growth, right? So how, so how can we, in our role, and especially Aunt Marie and I, as we're part of the Budget Balancing Committee and advocating for FY '25 and beyond, how can we help? What can we advocate for?
So I think that probably the best thing that you can do is to help provide guidance for where we should be looking. So we don't see the things that you see day-to-day. We don't hear from the people that you hear from. So having that filter to come to us and say, "This is the group that we, you know, we think really will be most affected by some sort of resource investment." That is probably the best thing that you could do to be helpful to us so we can be efficient. Efficiency, unfortunately, is a key part of what we're going to be able to do. Everything we're doing is trying to be more efficient. We're working on systems efficiencies to help free Janice up on some of the processing. And if we can do that, then she and I can do more things like going into the schools and providing office hours so that people can come and talk or ask questions, or we can share what resources are available to them. So I think if we can make that, that day-to-day processing more efficient, we'll have more time to kind of reach out into the community, but we're still not there as much as you are. And so hearing from you all how we can be helpful is, I think, the best thing that you can do for us, honestly.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Just to that point, I guess, is there, there's probably a line of communication from our administrators that are in our buildings, and that would be even more important resource than having it bubble up to us, right? Like, a direct line of communication.
So we, we hear from Dr. Taylor and Matt constantly. Like, we talk with them probably daily.
And they're representing what's happening in our buildings.
Absolutely. But again, a lot of times, things will come to them when it's, it's an issue, right? When there's a problem to be solved. And I'm, I am of the mindset that we should be more proactive, like trying to hear the issues. So that's why I like to go out and do office hours. I like to just be where the people are because you can kind of see things that are potentially going to be a problem before the issues come and rise to their level. So you, and you will hear things, and you will see things, and you will identify what potential issues could be. So if we could hear about them before they become issues, that's really helpful.
Yeah. I guess I'm just thinking with like the budget, like with joint facilities, there's a shared oversight, right? So we hear regularly from Paul and his team, and there's like an equal reporting to Dr. Thompson and Mr. Mizuko. We don't have that with this because it wasn't like a full MOA consolidation process. It was like, "Let's try it and see what happens," and now we're assessing? So I guess I'm just trying to figure out as we move forward, amazing things are happening, but what is under our authority and direction? And, because we talked about this, and like this has come up a lot in our Budget Subcommittee in the last year, challenges with payroll and our HR and what to do, how to fix, but we have women in authority over that in the court structure.
I think if you, if you see opportunities for improvement in responsiveness, if you see opportunities or challenges in, in recruiting or retention that you think could be addressed, it's possible that we don't know about them. So those are, those are the times that you would want to talk to us. So responsiveness and, and issues that we might not see. I mean, we're going to address it as soon as we hear about it. But I think, I think that's probably, most of the stuff that we deal with is not something we can report back to you, right?
Right.
Like, it's a very confidential field. But responsiveness isn't confidential. If you, if people are having issues and they're not getting a response from the HR department, or we're having problems with recruiting or processing people through the system, then I think that that's when we need to hear about things. Unfortunately, we're one of those support areas that, you know, when we hear things, it's, you know, we don't ever hear when things are going really well, like, "That was so great, it only took 45 days to hire somebody." We don't, we don't get to hear the kind of good, the good side of things, but we do hear when it's, when there are challenges. So if we can kind of get ahead of that a little bit, if things seem to be dragging or you're not getting the response that you think, or people aren't getting the response they think we should get.
Are building principals working directly with you when they were hiring?
Are building principals working directly with you when they're hiring for their buildings?
Yes.
Okay. And so that line of communication, I'm sure it's been part of the learning curve of the last few years, but it's been established and.
Yep. And as far as oversight is concerned, there's lots of overlap with payroll. So if you ever have an issue with what's going on HR too, it's probably affecting payroll. So we can direct it together as a team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion?
Thank you for calling.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm super excited to be collaborating with you and engaged in this together. I think that there's a lot of good opportunities here. So I'm looking forward to working with you.
Thank you. Thanks. Yeah. Thank you to everybody who came. Thank you. It's a good thing it wasn't last night. It was a good day at Hazard Park. Because of the rain and the wind and the scribes and.
All right. So we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is the superintendent's report, which will be given this evening by Dr. Taylor.
All right. Good evening, everyone. As Chair Mazzola has shared, I'm just filling in for the night in Dr. Thompson's absence. Today, we're going to, I'm going to share an update on the tech capital reserve fund modification. We're going to talk about a change that we're going to make with the preschool conference date. We'll share a bit about what's happening in our schools. And then we will share what we know to date around our newcomer families that we're expecting. So the tech reserve fund modification, so Dr. Thompson brought this forward to the school committee about a month or two ago, indicating that this is coming down the pike. The tech would like to increase their reserve amount from 750, subject 150,000 to 3.5 million. The reason they're asking for this is because 750 is not enough for any major capital improvement emergency that they may need to account for. And so that's why they're asking for the increase. The, what we are asking the school committee in this case is that to not vote because as the tech, as the tech bylaw states, the member districts do not vote to approve such a request, they would vote to disprove. So you only vote if you object. For the preschool conference date, it was originally scheduled for Valentine's Day. And the school community, the LMPA community would like to move it to February 7th, which is also a national holiday, also known as Shree Taylor's birthday. And I approved the move because it's a great day to meet and be in community with each other. The, there was a PD scheduled for that day. That PD is an internal introduction to the new IUP. So it'll be easy to reschedule. So there really is no conflict here.
So do we want to do those quick? So does anyone have any questions on the tech reserve? Does anybody wish to vote against it?
No, but Dr. Taylor, just to clarify, the, for the community, this, this money is, does not come from Norwood. It does not come from our budget. It's just that we are part of the tech collaborative. So as tech advocates for things, they need to make sure that all their member districts are on board.
Exactly.
Okay.
That's a good point. So I, I will make, just checking, does anybody want to vote against it? Okay. So we will not take a vote on the tech reserve fund.
Wonderful choice.
Weird thing, by the way.
We will not vote to disprove. Okay. And then the preschool conference day, any questions on that?
Do you need a motion? Do you need a vote?
Yeah, this one we'll need a vote for because it's on the school calendar. So we do have to vote on that.
A motion to approve the, the change in preschool conference day suggested by the staff.
By Kate, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Joan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that passes. That just here.
Wonderful. Now we'll move on to what's happening in our schools. So we're going to begin with Coakley Middle School. On December 21st, grade six had their annual cultural day. Now, this is an ELA assignment that's composed of group presentations and individual writing assignments. Students have the opportunity, they also have sort of a potluck lunch happening where students are able to bring in food and other artifacts to share from their cultures. In addition, the entire school wears clothing to represent their home cultures as well. It's an event that the school community really looks forward to. And, you know, I'm glad that our students got to share who they are with each other and with their faculty. Norwood High School. So the NHS First Year Student Support Committee, which is comprised of over a dozen staff members, has been meeting regularly since May of 2023. This past Monday, the group presented their research site visits and student and staff feedback to date. This committee will update the school committee in the near future on its recommendations for providing enhanced academic, emotional, behavioral, and procedural support. So this committee, the short version of this, is that this committee is designed to think about how do we create a meaningful, intentional, rewarding experience for our ninth graders coming into school? And so the faculty have been very diligent, have been very thoughtful in the experience that they create, ensuring that there is community belonging and various supports needed from the outset when students arrive. We take a look at the Callahan. So the Callahan had their winter concert. Students from grades three through five performed a variety of selections. Audience members were respectful and they demonstrated the CARES expectations. So Callahan's, their SCA moniker is CARES. I cannot remember off the top of my head what CARES stands for. But that's essentially their behavioral expectations. Oldham has been focusing, well, they're getting ready for instructional rounds. So their team has been working very diligently on SEL, particularly in thinking about their problem of practice, which is during ELA, small group time, are the students not working directly with teachers engaged or is the work they're, and is the work they're doing rigorous? So here you'll see we're looking at engagement and rigor, particularly in this instructional round. And overall, our instructional rounds have been quite phenomenal this year. There have been a lot of, I've personally observed deeper conversations. I've observed peers being able to share not just the glows, but lovingly share grows as well. And that'll be great because as we're looking to improve instructional practice, you need that transparency in order to be able to improve going forward. And the Prescott, the Prescott had their monthly social emotional learning assembly. And they, where they recognize students are being responsible during the month of December. The SEL team has been working hard and diligently to find a variety of ways to demonstrate mastery of growth in certain SEL areas. And in the month of January, they'll be focusing on empathy. This skill is reinforced by the Character Strong curriculum, which we implemented this year in grades one through eight. And if we move on to job openings, we still have them. So as you can see, we need daily subs. College students have been here this month, which has been wonderful. We still need assistant transportation directors, special education teachers, Title I teachers. And we always need paraprofessionals, van drivers, and extended day staff as well. And if you are a multilingual member of the Norwood community, we would love to see you in any of these roles as that's an increasing need. All right. So the hot topic of the week. So we are expecting families from North Attleboro. They are currently in the North Attleboro Targeted Assistant Site. They are, up to 63 families will be moving to Norwood as a consolidation site at the end of the month. We have been in pretty regular communication with the administration over in North Attleboro. They've given us some preliminary information. So we know that there will be up to 40 students. It's really about 33 as of right now, when we parsed out the data today. Students, we're not guaranteed to have all 33 students come here. There are some caveats, like North Attleboro offers free pre-K. We don't. So the pre-K students will stay, more, most likely will stay in North Attleboro. So there are a couple of situations like that. The state will reimburse us $104 a day for the students that do choose to come here. That will be reimbursable quarterly. And just so that the general community is aware, town government and schools have been meeting weekly since the fall. We have our Friday meetings where we've been talking about emerging needs, taking stock of what we have in terms of resources and what we need to develop. And those meetings will continue. This Friday, both school and town will be meeting with state representatives to get more information and to find out what other supports are available to us. And just want to make the caveat that things might change. This is the information that we have today. As we get more, we'll share more. And I would just also like to say, as the daughter of Caribbean immigrants, as a first generation American, from an island very close to both country and island that a number of these students are coming from, I would just want to say that it is a privilege for us to be able to cultivate and share in the journey of the greatness of who they're going to become. And so as we think about diversity, as we think about inclusion, this makes us richer. If we say that in our five Cs that we are looking at citizenship and global citizenship, this richness and diversity of community, having exposure to other cultures, gets us where we need to be. That's a core value that we cannot meet if we do not embrace those who are different. And so with that, I ask that everyone be patient with us as we go through the process. And as we get more, we'll be sure to share more. And that is the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions or discussion for Dr. Taylor?
Joe? Dr. Taylor, I don't know if you can answer this, but you said that the schools in the town have been collaboratively planning since the fall. And I just want to clarify, we didn't get notice of this group of.
New arrivals.
New arrivals. Thank you. I'm like this group of people, but that's not very right. New arrivals until fairly recently, right? So the planning that has been going on was.
Been since November.
Okay.
November, yeah, about November.
Okay. So like, so, okay, so late November. Okay.
Right. And we didn't get an actual number until last month.
Okay. So we were notified that we were a site and could and have the potential. That's when the planning started. And then we got notified about this particular group of new arrivals.
Yep.
Not too long ago, a couple of weeks ago.
Couple of weeks ago. Right. Like right before the holidays, we got an actual number and potential transition dates.
Okay. I just want to make sure it's clear to everybody when, what, when we were notified, what we were notified of and when, which is potential versus an actual, like, okay, this is the group that's coming. Here's the demographics. Here's the statistics. Here's the numbers.
You're correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Teresa?
Dr. Taylor, thank you for what you just said. It was, I think, really impactful, powerful, important language. And I just want to welcome the families who are coming to Norwood. But you were talking about the five Cs. And I think this is an area of opportunity, Dr. Munoz, Dr. Taylor, to get some information out to the community. Because I bet you most people don't know what our five Cs are, unfortunately. Maybe if you have a high school student, because Dr. Galigan and Mr. Derry do a great job in embedding that. But if you have an elementary student, you probably don't know what those are. And I know that it's part of our portrait of a Norwood graduate. And when Dr. Galigan led that work in November years ago, I think like 2020, 21, the intent was that it would go down to the elementary level and then a lot of things happened and it never did. So I think there's really an opportunity at some point, because I know everybody's very busy, to go back to the work that was started with the high school staff around the portrait of the Norwood grad and those five Cs and those core values and share them with our entire community so everybody understands. I think that's really important. And then the second thing I just want to say with the school updates, which are really great to have, just to make connections, a lot of those updates tie directly to either the strategic plan and/or what principal said they were going to do in their own school improvement plans.
That's correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a small add-on that similar to what Teresa was saying in the, the school building reports, we see a lot of the elementary kids working on their SEL curricula. And I think a lot of that translates to, to welcoming these families and how we treat our neighbors. And I think we can, children often know instinctively what to do and we, you know, we can walk hand in hand in that way as we, as we welcome folks. So. We've got the knowledge. We just keep doing it.
Yeah. This is an excellent FAQ. Has this gone out to everybody? Where did this FAQ? We have an excellent FAQ on our, on our desk. But did the FAQ go to or just the letter?
The FAQ went out to.
The FAQ went out. Yes. So if you are on parent, if you're a parent, there's an excellent FAQ in there that lists, that answers literally any question you could ask about this. So read past the letter and get to the FAQ.
And both the letter and FAQ are artifacts from the meetings that we've been having.
Great.
And they are posted on the website. I, I saw them posted on social media on the town page, but I didn't know if they, will these go up on both town and school website?
They will go up on the school website.
Awesome.
I did see it earlier on the town website as well.
Oh, good.
When I was looking for something else, I saw this.
It's really good.
It happens fast today, but I, I didn't see it yet on our site, but maybe.
I think the priority was getting it out on Parent Square to.
Yep.
To the families in the system district and then, you know, the town website kind of out to the rest.
Yeah.
Or not parents in the district.
Right. For us people is Parent Square for us. We always get that first and then we go back to the website.
Yeah.
Whereas the town goes straight to the site.
And Dr. Taylor, if anybody in the community has questions about this directly related to schools, who should they contact?
They can contact the superintendent's office and we'll direct the call.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other discussion?
Oh, sorry. Just one other question that I think you guys covered. But when you know more, when the working group knows more, where the children, what schools they go to, will be discussed and figured out based on all of the factors that go into that. So that answer does not exist yet, but.
No.
You will be working with administrators to figure that out.
Correct.
Just to, in case anyone's.
Right. We anticipate.
I don't think that's on the FAQ.
Yeah, we anticipate after we have our meeting with the state next week and we see, well, this Friday, and we see what other changes shake out over the next couple of weeks. Because again, the families can choose to stay.
Right.
In North Attleboro.
So that 33 number is potential families.
Is potential.
Got it.
Max potential.
Potential students. Got it. Okay.
Yes. We make it five. Right. And that we can absorb.
So you're planning for all the off.
Okay, correct.
Understood. Thank you.
So you're ready to move on? Okay. That's what I was like, waiting for the finger to come up from somebody. All right. So thank you for that, Dr. Taylor. And so we'll move on to our next item under budget. We have the budget subcommittee update. Ms. Stewart?
Sure. So we met as a subcommittee right after the new year on January 4th. A little under two hours this time. We all got 15 minutes back into our day.
Good for you.
Proud to say that. Usually we're going over, but this time we got out a little early. In your packet, you have our agenda from that meeting as well as the links to the materials that we reviewed. You don't yet have the draft minutes. They're still being worked on. But as soon as we have those minutes done, we will of course share out. So we started the meeting with Dr. Frazek joining us, as you might remember from our December meeting. The topic of the new middle school, the staffing of the new middle school and the 17.85 FTEs that we previously approved is something that the Finance Commission and potentially at some point, EDC will want a little bit more information on. So as a budget subcommittee with Dr. Frazek, we are looking at being able to tell that story and explain why those numbers are what they are and what has evolved since we wrote the educational plan for the new middle school back in 2020, 2021. So stay tuned for more work on that. We were talking about planning for Budget Balancing Committee. Unfortunately, there still is not yet a date set for a January meeting. All of us involved at this table are trying to get that date arranged. And as soon as we know that. And as soon as we know that date, we will share with all of you. But we really do need to prioritize at this point what is going to happen with fiscal year '25. Because as we all know, and as Mr. Wells knows intimately, we are deep into the creation of the fiscal year '25 budget, and the override pledge has ended. And we really need discussion parameters agreement on how we're building that budget, school and town. So as soon as we have more information, we will share that with all of you. Things that we're just keeping on our radar, that you can see linked in our packet, are the town audits that have previously happened, as well as the fiscal policies that the three boards worked on before and have agreed to adhere to. I suspect at some point, probably not till spring or summer, the three boards will need to convene again and look at some fiscal policies again and discuss, is this still working, or do we need to change some things? We are having our budget workshop on January 22nd. Mr. Wells is working on that presentation and information. But hopefully, the principals, the administrative team, directors will be joining us for that discussion. We talked a little bit about the newcomers, the new arrivals that Dr. Taylor shared with us tonight. And, you know, Kate, your question of which school and staffing and everything, as the administration figures that out, if it does end up having, you know, a staffing resource budgetary impact, although there will eventually be that $104 reimbursement, there may be some things upfront that we need to discuss. It'll come to subcommittee and then back to the full committee. Lori gave us a brief update on student services. There wasn't too much going on last week, but not good weather, probably a whole lot going on by today. She did share, so as you know, we have a number of contracted services. Two of those positions were maternity leaves, and those maternity leaves are ending, so the full-time staff will be back. So we are down to one contracted service position. There is a new PAC teacher at the Oldham that started. And we do have an opening now for a speech and language pathologist that Ms. Sino's office is looking at filling. We talked a little bit about HR, but you already heard plenty on that tonight. It was planned to have an ELL presentation tonight, but that'll be moved into the next meeting.
Yeah. Yep, sorry, I should have said that earlier.
And then, just planning out our work. Obviously, the next three months is very, very budget-heavy. We are meeting again on January 18th. Dr. Munoz is joining us, because I want to ask him a lot of budget questions around curriculum assessment and PD.
I'm stoked.
You're stoked. Good. Just let me know how much time you want on our agenda.
As much as you want.
Okay. Did I miss anything, Emery?
I don't think you did. I think you covered everything.
Okay, and then another piece that was not discussed last week, because it kind of was just unfolding, but I think we do all need unfortunately to have on our radar, is the governor's budget. And I have not yet had a chance to ask any administration team these questions, I'm asking you now. But what I am aware of from MASCE is that unfortunately for the current FY '24 state budget, there are some cuts that will be impacting potentially helping human services and education. My understanding is that some grant lines are being reduced. So I guess a question back to Dr. Taylor, Dr. Munoz, Mr. Wells, back to Dr. Thompson, is are we impacted? So the lines that I was told are impacted are grants around extended learning time, dual enrollment, STEM, school-to-career connecting activities, student wellness school supports, AP grants. I know we have some of those grants, maybe not all. So MASCE is just recommending that we analyze our line items and check with our representatives to see if Norwood was impacted by any of those cuts to those grants.
So Mr. Wells did a cursory look through the budget, so I'll open it to him to share.
What's available right now to look at. And we kind of did a quick look through it, and most of it, it looks like they were bringing the, they're bringing it down to match the actual expenses that were there, where the budgets were higher than what they were anticipating coming in. So a lot of those cuts were not really cuts to anything, they were more just coming in line with what the state was expecting to actually spend in those areas. There are some smaller buckets that were cut that I was looking at. I said, hmm, you know, those sound like something that, you know, could affect us in some way, but there's, the detail behind it wasn't quite there. So we're going to continue to ask about that. Masbo is definitely working and digging into it a little bit more, but it seems to have right now a lower impact on, it certainly wasn't, you know, our Chapter 70 or anything like that. So we're going to continue to dig into it and find out exactly how it might impact us.
So I'll put that on the budget subcommittee agenda if you have information next week. If not, whenever you do, just share it with us.
Yeah, as soon as we do.
I know you're waiting.
They're going to give it to us, but as soon as they do, we're definitely going to communicate it.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions on the update? So we'll move on to the next agenda item under budget, which is a budget transfer that we'll need to vote on.
We have two budget transfers tonight. The first one is a $7,500 transfer. This is to cover the, the over cost of the elementary utilization space study. The actual bid came in, or quote came in, is a little over $67,000. Article 10 was funded at $60,000, so we had to find that additional $7,000 plus. So we're making this transfer from these two lines to cover that amount. Do we vote them independently?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so we would definitely entertain a vote to transfer that money.
Does anyone have any questions on that transfer?
Just, Mr. Wells, I know you and I were talking earlier, so we had previously thought we'd be able to take all $7,000 from the contracted services under the community civic engagement.
Yes.
But it wasn't all available there, so we need to split it between two lines?
Yeah, so we're pulling from the second line. The employee separation cost line was underspent by about $10,000 last year. So I've looked at that and said, I believe we've got enough money available from that as well to be able to support this, this project.
Any other questions? There's a motion to approve this transfer.
So moved.
Moved by David. Seconded by Joan, all those in favor? Aye. So it passes by zero? And it's already signed?
Excellent.
The second one is a larger transfer, but this is the, this is for adjustments to account for the movement of staff using the higher-down savings to cover some of the school committee, the post-budget school committee approved positions, and to balance out some of these accounts with higher-down and higher-up savings to get it really kind of balanced out. So this is a larger adjustment of $256,000. But it is just to balance those accounts to make sure that we have the money in the right places where the expenses are.
Any questions on that budget transfer?
No, just, Mr. Wells, that's a normal part of the process, as we place staff, right?
Yeah, yeah, this is, this is like a continuous item that just happens.
Motion to approve. Moved by Teresa, I have a second.
Second.
Seconded by David, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so on to our next agenda item under old business. We are going to get an update from Ms. Having Dunn and Mr. Hills on the superintendent's search.
Yes, everything is going to plan. We had our first evening of interviews on Monday, and we will have our second evening of interviews tomorrow. And there's nothing else to report. It's going to plan according to schedule. And once information is public about finalists, that will be posted for the public and all. Any questions?
When do you anticipate that again?
Public finalists?
When do we, yeah, when do you anticipate?
We should be announced, we should be announcing finalists on the, our 124 agenda.
Okay. Great.
You guys should be prepared for, we're going to finalize with Jim tomorrow, but you should be prepared for that two-week window of the 24th through February 7th. We will send along the finalists. We need to reschedule, and those next steps based on Jim's recommendations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
David, just to clarify, so Jim Hardy is going to send out like date options and when to vote? Is that what we're doing?
He will, we will put together a schedule, he will, and we will share it with you. He was not there on Monday. He had a, something came up, so one of his colleagues were there.
Yeah, we can also, we have to firm things up, so I was going to do that. Agenda-wise, off, off meeting time, like, because we don't know yet.
We're going to talk about dates on my fifth agenda, okay.
That's exactly what I was trying to do.
And then, so I know you were going to announce the finalists during the meeting on the 24th. I've just been following with the superintendent's search in many of the districts.
Yeah.
Everybody does it a little bit differently.
Yeah.
So what should the community expect after we say who our finalists are?
So Jim is going to...
Are they shared on the website?
Jim is going to come and explain the process and what to expect. But we, yes, we would share on the website. And then a schedule two would go up. Someone, someone pointed out to me recently that the, our last superintendent's search information was on our website somehow, somewhere, somewhere buried. So we've taken that down, or we've hidden it at this point. And, but similarly, that pertinent information will go up publicly.
You used to not be able to search our website, which was kind of interesting. There was never like an actual search icon, and now that there is, it's probably bringing something up.
Probably. I was confused, yeah, she, no.
It's our, honestly, it's our website, let's be honest. Like, it's a love-hate relationship with our, with our assistant, but...
Yeah, and so it's, it's going well, and the committee is fantastic. Everyone is really, again, I appreciate their time and commitment. Everyone on the committee has, you know, has some kind of background related to, we were able to do this because of the people who fly, but some kind of background related to our, all our district priorities and strategies. So that's, makes for rich conversation. And unless there's like, like many snowstorms, we're going to stay on this guy's...
There was a six-foot river on Upland Road today. I don't, I just, it's more likely that we're going to be swimming during the interviews.
It's called a, it's called a snow date, not called a rain day.
Yeah, we have a, we have a snow date, so. We have a plan for that, just not many of those, so, that's it.
Any questions for Kate and David?
Thank you for your round of work.
All right, so we will move on to the next agenda item, which is an update on the elementary study. I think that's going to be short as well.
Yeah, Dave sent out the email, I just want to make sure that it's right. We have our first meeting on the, he also sent us a timeline that the group had sent, but the group meaning Geo. But, hmm, I have lost it, give me a minute. My labeled folder.
I think it's the 30th.
Uh, yes, from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. on Tuesday, 1:30. So we will be able to provide more updates post that meeting. And we have invited, you know, members of that group and members of, you know, the team who were a part of some of the meetings, so like transportation, some of the principals, some of the department heads that, whose feedback was, is important to, to that process, so.
Did you, I'm sorry, so Kate, did you say one to three?
I said two to three.
Two to three. I just want to, I'm just scanning. Because I can't then keep things together, so I'm just putting it in our shared calendar.
Smart.
Because you know I can't keep that, you know, anyway. Perfect, okay, so that will be a meeting, the elementary study. What are we, just, do you know, group, working group?
Yes.
Got it.
Emery, clarification, is, are these still posted meetings? And do you need people to take minutes?
I would imagine that we would have someone there, and if it's posted and shared, I would say yes.
I don't think it has to be posted anymore.
You don't think it has to be posted even if it's a...
Because we asked this question already, once it's a working group.
But there's two of you in it?
But we're not running it. Or I can go off of it. Like, it just needs to move forward, like, it's more admin and that.
Okay.
Yeah.
We will clarify that, so.
Yeah, I think I asked this question.
I'm just wondering, just, yeah, okay.
In terms of the minutes, hopefully we're getting more help soon, but I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
I think we are.
Yeah.
All righty, any other questions for the elementary study group? Great. Moving.
I'll just make a plug, maybe we make the next update for that, the 14th.
Yeah, that makes sense, because it'll be, your meeting will be after the 24th.
Well, that, and then the 7th will probably be just full of budget and that stuff, so it's just a thought, but...
Yeah, I mean, that's, unless something comes up in that working group that you think you need to...
Share.
Bring up.
Share.
That is, rather bring it up sooner rather than later, but.
Perfect.
I gotcha. All right, perfect. All right, so we're going to move on to policy. So we have a policy subcommittee update, which should be a...
Very short. I will say apologies to everyone. This is, first of all, I wasn't here last time. We won't have anything to vote on tonight.
Oh, no, that's not true, we can still do BDFAE.
Because that's, right, because that's been posted for two weeks, right? Is it the second vote?
Four weeks at this point, but yes.
Okay, so neither of us were here last time. There's been a lot of illness, and frankly, just trying to coordinate the team, the committee, and other things taking priority lately, things that just keep getting pushed. So our, I don't have anything to, new to report for policy. So we'll keep that short and skip to what you just mentioned.
Yeah, so we'll, we're going to skip over JLCA for today, because there were questions on that that we were not able to answer, and because we weren't able to meet. So that'll go on our next agenda. We'll get that more buttoned up for the next time that we've, not entirely sure for the next meeting, if not the next meeting.
Well, that's part of the problem, yeah.
We'll get that scheduled, we'll make sure everybody knows when it's coming back to the committee. But we, but know that it is being worked on actively.
Yep.
And so then that does bring us down to the second vote for policy, BDFAE. If you recall, we've had our first vote on this in December, the first meeting in December, and I'm blank on the exact date. But this was then posted to our school webpage for any community comment. I don't, I have not received any information that there was any questions or concerns about this policy.
Neither did we.
Perfect, so...
Really?
It is, it was a policy that pretty much was just a marriage of a couple of existing policies. I didn't expect there to be any questions on it. But we do have to take a second vote, because it is technically a new policy. So does anybody want to make a motion to approve? Moved by Teresa, I have a second. Seconded by Kate, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so that passes five to zero.
Emery, can I just request, Dr. Taylor, through you, I know it's basically all the policy now into one, but could this policy and the other one of school council just be shared out with the principals, so they are aware of the changes?
Correct, we can do that.
Thank you.
Okay. So that actually brings us down to, we do not have anything under new business this evening. So that brings us to the consent agenda. So, Dr. Taylor, would you like to tell us what donations we have this evening?
Sure. So we have five donations tonight. And the first one is from Bay State Textiles. It's the November rebate in the amount of $651.30. We have the lead program $100 gift card from Sandra and William DeSupolo. We have the women's committee, community committee $500 gift card for the Oldham School. We have the women's community committee gift card for $400 for the Prescott. And then we also have the gift basket and gift cards from local businesses and organizations. And we'd like to take this time just to recognize this conglomerate of organizations that have really helped our families for both Thanksgiving and Christmas. So the organizations that we have listed for the Thanksgiving blessing baskets are St. Tim's Church, the Norwood Junior Women's Club, Gaston Electrical, and the Corey Team. For the winter holiday gifts, gift cards and dinners, we have from one local bank, St. Catherine's in St. Timothy's Parishes, the Norwood Junior Women's Club, Burn Bootcamp, the Eckert Foundation, Old Colonial Cafe, and Conrad's. So all of these businesses and organizations have been supporting our families specifically during the holidays to ensure that they have a holiday meal in the same way that we do. So I just wanted to take this time to thank them. The principals and school nurses have sent thank you notes to these businesses as well. But we'd just like to take this time to thank them publicly here.
Agreed.
Do we have to take individual votes to accept the donations?
No, no, that's why it's consent agenda, we can do it all at once. Is there a motion to approve these donations?
So moved.
By Kate, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Teresa, her hand over. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so that passes by zero. All righty, so that brings us to the school committee addenda. Teresa, do you have anything this evening?
Do you just let me quickly pull up my calendar, so I don't tell you the wrong date on something? Just let me quickly pull up my calendar so I don't tell you the wrong date on something. Just a quick few updates on some of the things that I am involved in. So we have a school health council meeting yesterday. Kate was there as well. And hot off the press, saved the date for Saturday, November 2nd, because that is going to be the Wellness Fair. Mr. Quigley had told us before, we are planning, we are committed to that date. Saturday, November 2nd at the high school. And now we have a lot of hard work and magic to pull off, but I am confident that we can do so. Just to my colleagues, I had sent out an email around the next meeting with the Student Advisory Council. So Dr. Galligan was hoping that some of us could meet with the Student Advisory Council on January 25th during Wynn. Again, that's like 10, 10:22 to 11:19, I think, is my block. I think Kate said she was hoping to go. I will be able to come. If anybody else wants to be able to, you know, to join us, let us know, because Dr. Galligan and I are just working on the agenda for that meeting. And then for Impact Norwood, just an invitation to the community, Impact Norwood's next coalition meeting is going to be Thursday, January 25th at 6 o'clock at the Civic Center. Thank you.
Kate?
Thanks. I'm looking forward to the Wellness Fair. I just want to say that I have been here around eight years and I've really enjoyed being involved in this community. It's a community of doers, people who like to get their hands dirty and get in there and share in community. And it's been a privilege to, to learn from people who've been here for a long, for a very long time, who take a lot of pride in the history of this town, to meet new people, that new families that have come here and wanted to add their own, you know, help, contribute. And I look forward to seeing that continue as we continue to grow and welcome new people and continue to work together with our old friends as well.
Joan?
I just want to once again thank all of the businesses and organizations that have donated to the various events that have been organized by the school. Excuse me. And I just wanted to re, or I guess to amplify Mary Lou Folan's message that you can pull your papers and that they are due on, oh, I wrote it down.
February.
February 12th. And so I encourage everybody, we always need town meeting members. I encourage people, if they're interested in trying to help shape the town, pull your papers, join an office. That's the beauty of local politics. But if nothing else, if you want to get involved, town meeting is a great way to have a significant impact with, in a manageable way. So.
So stealing my thunder a little bit.
Oh, sorry.
No, with, you know, Mary Lou and people from the towns clerk's office over tonight, I will be pulling my papers soon. I cannot believe that I am approaching three years on this committee. Hair a little bit grayer, hair a little bit longer.
Longer.
You know, but I will say this has been an incredibly rewarding experience. I really enjoy the work and the parallel with my professional career being in education. It's, it is enjoyable. It is fun. It may not always seem that way, but I have and it's been quite a learning experience and a lot of fun being able to give back to a town that has given quite a bit to me and my family. So I am running for reelection and just wanted to take the time to say that. And I'm pulling papers and
There you go.
It should be an exciting couple months.
Now it's a public meeting official. All right. I do not have anything except to say, I hope everybody had a great holiday break. I hope everyone's re-entering well to the hustle and bustle. I hope everybody fared through the crappy weather in the last couple of days well enough. My sump pump continues to go off, so I feel for anybody else that is having issues. And that is it. And I'd like to congratulate us for one of the fastest meetings we've had in like a year. Woo-hoo. So that brings us to the end of our meeting. Unfortunately, we do need to go into executive session. We will only reconvene for the purpose of adjournment. I do need a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Moved by David, seconded by Teresa. I have to poll individually. Teresa?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. We thank you for joining us. We will be back here on Wednesday, January 24th at 7:00 PM for in-person, well, for hybrid meeting. And we wish you a good night.